The agenda up. Andy Hamish is absent tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and chair. First thing is public comments. Members of the public must be present to provide public comment. We do not have any members of the public present at the moment. I'll string it along for another second or two. All right, let's do agenda review. Anyone have anything to add to the agenda? Looking around, I don't see anything to be added to the agenda. Okay. Let's move along to consent items. Do we still have zero?
Zero.
Okay. Moving right along then to immediate business number one. Fiscal year 24 update. So Amber did. Amber did print a report. I just told Amy, I forgot to put it in the drive, so I'll put that summary in the drive. But right now, we are positive $852. So still carefully watching that. But like I said, we got to that point because we sort of pulled all the money over. Like we're going to spend everything and we'll have to have conversations as we go along. You decide, you know, you're feeling more comfortable toward the end. We can actually do some spending in the schools that we haven't been able to do. We'll have that conversation, but we are still close to not doing it. Thanks, Patty. Any questions or comments on the update for this fiscal year?
So 390 is one thousand.
Deficit?
Yeah.
So we start, when we start those surplus reports, we sort of leave, they're manipulated. So if you just pull the report out, it would just show you the money that you spent. So we manipulate that report. So in the beginning of the year, Amber pulls over, like, we're going to spend all our money. So there was $50,000 in supplies she would put, we're anticipating 50,000. We were running in the deficit for so long, I said, okay, pull that money back over and say, we're not going to spend anything other than maybe some supply money and see where we're at if we didn't spend another penny. And that's how we got to that number. So hopefully, we will be spending more money, but I just wanted us to pull that over so we could get a clearer picture of what would happen if.
Okay.
Thanks, Jean. Any other comments or questions on fiscal year, this fiscal year 2024 update? Okay. Moving on to the program of studies. We have the notable changes summary in our packet. Do we want to hand it right over to Dan? Okay, Dan, put this one down, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I want to introduce Curtis here. Curtis is going into, I believe, month eight as our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And he's prepared a document for you that I believe is in your drive. And he'll give you kind of like a 30,000 view on notable changes with that. Curtis?
Thank you, Dan. So taking a look at the first page of the notable changes. We're looking to expand opportunities for students to demonstrate technology literacy in that first component for those new eligible technology credit classes. So we have teachers developing some really fantastic lesson plans that will help fulfill those requirements. Moving down to the USDA non-discrimination statement that helps get us into compliance with free and reduced lunch programs. At the very bottom of the page, we start with the math exposure. And this is compliance with a state regulation that was just revised this past October. And onto the second page, we see those classes that qualify for math exposure. And those are throughout the building and throughout departments that qualify for that math exposure component. On our third page, we're taking a look at some really new and exciting opportunities, such as beat making. So Scott Tito has changed his class from music tech production through performance to beat making, which will also count both as a math exposure and a technology literacy. So we're really excited about those opportunities. Our change in grade levels helps qualify and streamline course offerings. And then our change in course rates at the bottom of the page, where student and teacher requested to adjust the changes in course rates. Taking a look at page four. This is a clarification, an update of the prerequisites that are listed for these classes. And then taking a look at page five. We see, especially in science, that our science teachers have done a really nice job aligning course descriptions to the curriculum that is being developed right now. And their stage one, stage two opportunities per RNS for physics. I'd like to call folks' attention to page seven. Page seven shows our animal and plant science offerings, which are expanded, and the growth of arts and tech offerings to meet student needs. We see those courses continue on page eight. And on page nine, we see that our world language program is continuing to foster new opportunities for students to exhibit their competence in various forms in new classes. And then we're also really excited at the bottom of page nine to see our expansion of dual-credit offering courses through Southern University. We're hoping to continue this partnership and have that grow, which they've been great to work with. On the last page, page 10, we're looking at clarifying that these classes are not tech-credited courses and therefore reclassifying them as BU instead of IT courses. And then the removed classes are an opportunity for us to update and modernize the program of studies to reflect the new and exciting opportunities that are available to our students here at Amber Academy. So I welcome your questions.
I had a clarification on the USDA non-discrimination statement.
Yes.
I was wondering why gender identity and sexual orientation were not in there. So if you just want to relook at that, it is expressed a couple different ways online in the resources. Sometimes it's in a parenthetical, clarifying what the word sex means. Sometimes those two things are listed separately, but in your document, they're not listed at all.
Okay. I can definitely go back and take a peek at that again. Thank you so much.
And I'll just add that Andy Hamish, the chair, did note that he supports all of these changes and updates to the program of studies.
Awesome. Any other questions that I may be able to shut some light off?
Last call? Okay, we usually do a motion on this, right? Okay, anyone want to move to approve?
I will move to approve the changes as presented.
Second by Carrie. Motion by Jean, second by Carrie. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, that's all four of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Easy, easy. Yeah. All right, so next.
Next is the funding resolution. That was also in the packet on the drive. And I'm not going to read through it, but hopefully, everybody hasn't had a chance to see it. I'm hoping, Patty, you can give us sort of a four-on-one on where this came from.
Sure. So all of our districts have been talking about the lack of funding for education. And Jack had actually, the board where he came from had adopted this. He drafted it, and asked if we wanted to use it as well. And all of his boards voted to approve it and send it along. So I asked him to draft one for Pembroke Deerfield as well. Completely up to you, but the other districts adopted it, and I thought he might be interested in that as well.
And Andy, his words are, fully supports the resolution, and he will sign it. So I wanted to share that. I also fully support it, for what it's worth, and I would be happy to sign it. Thoughts, questions about the resolution?
I think we could probably, I mean, it doesn't just limit us to the school even. We can distribute it to the select four and even the NBC for more signatures, if they're willing to do so. I think it's, it's a statement. I support it, but it's little or nothing, probably will come a bit, but we can hope for the best. But yeah, I would suggest that.
Send it along.
Yeah, yeah, we could. All right, and if you have a clean copy of whatever, you know, our names, we'll need.
Yeah, I can, I have the word version, so I'll just take off the names and see if they want to use it and.
This is just a general information question. Is this something that we could have at our town meeting, to our school district meeting, just, and start getting signatures on it? I mean, the more, the more people to, I mean, I'm just, this is a general question. I'm not really, I don't know what kind of logistics are or the realities of it, but is it something that, I mean, I'm pretty sure, once we get through town meeting, people are going to say, I'll sign anything that I possibly can to get more funding for schools.
Thoughts about, you know, the, not only students in the schools, but also the taxpayers? So I don't see why that, that would be an issue.
And we can, we can talk more about it before leaving, but I just, that's just a thought I have.
It does, right, yes.
And the last paragraph says, the school board calls upon the representatives. We could, I could just make one available if the board chooses and say that taxpayers of Pembroke or the Pembroke community members, however, don't see any harm, and we can send it in for them.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
The unfortunate thing, if something is decided to do, like the, you know, increasing it to 70, 73, 7400, it's all going to come to property tax anyway. You know, that statewide property tax that we all get on our tax bill is going to increase. So it won't really leave any burden, but I think it'll signal the intentions that we've had enough. We can't take it anymore.
We don't necessarily have to hash out how the state lawmakers would come up with the money during this meeting. But, you know, I own a little tiny small business, and they have futzed around with the business enterprise tax. You know, there's the rooms and meals tax, there's the gas tax, like, there's, there's a lot of taxes and fees and lots of other things aside from property tax. And then there's the I-word, you know, the income tax. So there's a, there are options other than property tax. I don't disagree with you that in reality, it will be all or a vast majority property tax, but I, I don't see how that that's a sustainable future. The same way that our constituents tell us at our meeting that our budget is not sustainable, putting all of this on property taxes indefinitely is also not sustainable.
Other discussion on the resolution? Anyone want to make a motion to adopt this resolution? Adopt this resolution?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, that's all four of us. Thank you, guys. And do you have a signature copy tonight for us? Okay, and then just make sure, Andy?
Thank you. Have a great day.
Okay, as you all know, well, as, I will let you know if you didn't know. Andy circulated in a one-way, non-discussion email to the board, a draft presentation for the school district meeting. If there's any discussion on that, we can certainly discuss that. I did send him my comments, and I can go through all of those if that would be helpful. But generally, I said stuff like, you know, where, where there are those slides of 10 years of data, maybe could we cut it down to five so it can be legible? And where there are slides with like 10 years of data, even if you cut it down to five years of data, maybe state the point of the slide in like a phrase or a sentence? Because asking people to like look at that and get it is a lot to ask. I made some wordsmithing suggestions. And then I, I made a couple value things, like, in the conclusion, it's all, it's very economic-y, but maybe say something about like tying it to the introduction, like, you know, and an education that meets the mission is important, you know, something like what we're getting for all of this money. So that was like the gist of it. So he is requesting, since he is not here, that everybody send him in a one-way, just to him, thoughts on the presentation, please. But he's also saying that if we want to have a discussion about the presentation tonight, that he would find that to be very helpful, especially anything, any content that is not in there that we feel should be in there, and any content that is in there that we feel really should not be in there. So if we just want to take a moment to eyes on that and kind of go around the room answering those questions, you know, is there anything that you see in there that we really should act like that should not be in here? Or no mission? You know, you look through it and you think, why isn't that in there?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how important it is, but something that really bothers me on the cost-per-pupil page, you know, that's, that's average and it's K-12, but if you call out just the high school, we're like $3,500 less than the state average for high school. So I don't know if it's worth, I mean, it might mean people saying, well, you didn't compare us, other high schools to us. So I don't want to add data, but I just, that number just sticks in my head that we're pretty significantly below in the high school level. So I guess just, I'll just give him that feedback, and if he wants to, we can.
And that's moving, you know, we're $2,200 less overall, and then 35, you know, you can just make that break it down, like, or just speak it.
Amy, I didn't get a chance to email, but I did look through the slides. I had the same suggestion, especially on the enrollment one, if we could do five years, because it really does look like the years they vary. By having 10, it makes it look like five mass exodus, if you look at it, at least I, Ashley, you know. He's getting what I'm saying. Yep.
And I also thought that point, so like I fed him suggested points that I thought were his points, just so maybe it would help to pop the paste. And I think the point there is that, I think the way I phrased it was like statewide enrollment is decreasing, but less so in Pembroke. You know, just make it a statement at the top of the slide and then have five years of data to back it up. And I thought it was really good, too. And I noted this for him, too, that he puts, you know, the link to where the data is. So like, if anybody ever doubts that statement, like, well, just, you go through the data yourself, you know? Any other answers to what is missing that's not here, or what is here that we should cut?
A teacher pay now shows us beat above the state average.
Yeah.
But if you go down to the next one, similar schools, right, the state average.
Right.
You know, so.
And I suggested adding a statement there, like, you know, attracting and retaining quality educators saves money.
So that one.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't know, to Amy, the CPA one. Didn't have much on there, I didn't know.
I, that was the old one, I think, from the last presentation. So I, I sent him the pair contract with the summary and, yeah, I sent him, he just, he used the draft that he used last time, which had the teacher's CPA. So I did send that today. I sent him the red line version and the cost sheets so he could incorporate that back.
Yeah.
I think what he's intending to do is just sort of use this as a template, you know, plug in all the correct numbers. I guess we should, I think it's important to note in a positive way, the win-win of the savings for the district and the savings for the paras of changing the insurance plan. Like to do a specific call-out for that on this slide, probably.
Richard. Yeah.
Richard.
Until this upcoming contract, they were on a sort of more luxurious plan than the teachers.
Yes, yep.
One question I had is, are, how does this dovetail with presentation from Jess? So in other words, like, does Andy present and then Jess presents preemptively? Or does Andy present and then we go to Q and A and Jess jumps up as applicable? Like, we should have a plan.
That's a good question. We've never done a preemptive presentation with that. She's fully prepared to jump up like she did at the public hearing and answer specific questions. We weren't planning on having her present, and we've never done that, but if you, if that's something you think is helpful, let us know, and I'll ask her to do that.
My feeling is, this particular show is Andy's show, and we should let him decide. And I'm okay with however he decides to handle it, but I'm only okay with that if you guys are also okay with that.
One of, one of the things, I mean, it would be awesome for Jess to get up there and explain special ed, but the problem is that the length of the meeting probably may be such that that would be prohibitive at this point in time. But to have her, every time somebody brings up a question about this, no matter what it is, if she's got the answer, let her take it. The other thought I had, where is she at, remember, she was going to make a comparison with other, especially across another scheme, it's annoying.
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, we could find that out, and we could, you know, have those numbers. There's some numbers with, you know, like budget, some numbers with, and I didn't go back and follow them up at this point in time, like, why, why did we get it so hard?
Yeah.
In the, right, in the S and U. And then, you know, maybe other comparable towns. Now Manchester, you already had that discussion, is not comparable because they've got services on the place. But, you know, if she's finding out where other towns outside the S and U.
See if she does. I know she's not put something out to her group.
Right.
See if she does. Check her out. We still have another meeting right for.
Oh, okay, wasn't sure.
I said yes, and then I thought, wait a minute, no, we don't.
So, no, it's close.
Yeah.
So I think we'll just leave it that if Andy wants Jess to be ready to sort of go right behind him with a presentation before Q and A, then he needs to coordinate that directly with her or through you, or he needs to affirmatively make that happen. Otherwise, you will have her ready to respond to Q and A.
You know, maybe a broad, at best, maybe a two or three-minute broad overview of special ed.
Okay. Last call for anything you guys want added? Okay, and anything, you didn't see anything here. I don't see anyone having any heart attacks about anything that Andy put in here. Okay. And go ahead.
One, sorry. I think probably, you know, a couple of minutes, just two or three minutes wide. And then, at that point in time, it may trigger questions in the audience, rather than like a whole 20-minute or presentation.
Jess, you talking?
Yeah, Jess, you know, just to indicate, you know, when Andy gets to that point, say, okay, special ed has gone up, thanks number of dollars this year, and, you know.
Oh, a minute, maybe?
When he said, when he does his presentation.
So like shift to that slide eight?
Yeah, and then maybe she could come in and just say, all right, this is what's happened, and just a quick overview in that the time thing, let the presidents take up the time versus Jess presenting, and then have even more questions.
Yeah.
So just like, you know, expedite a little bit while still getting the information out and maybe giving some good feedback, get questions back, so people understand why.
I like that idea also, because if we, I like that idea a lot for a number of reasons. A, it gives Andy a little bit of a breather in his presentation. B, it gives the audience a breather between like their first hit on the special education topic, and then Andy talks about other stuff, and then Q and A. You know, so it's not quite so like hot and heavy. So that's what we're recommending to Andy. But Jean, do you feel so strongly about it that, you know, is it okay if Andy decides not to do that?
Yeah, it's just, it's a suggestion, you know, that I'm thinking may get some good questions asked, we can get more information out there, rather than forcing the information out and then having people react to that, so.
And I was just going to say, in closing on this topic, everybody should continue to feel free to thank in email Andy individually, you know, One Direction, you email to Andy if you have any follow-up thoughts.
Okay.
March meeting location? I don't have any particular thoughts, but Andy did. Andy said he thinks, as much as he hates the gym and recognizes the acoustical issues, he thinks that we'll have enough people to need the gym. And that he doesn't think we need to prepare for any overflow outside of the gym.
Because I think we can put a thousand people in there. You know, for everybody, if a lot of people do come out, we might see 500.
And if that was the case, they'd all be sitting filling every single chair in our dorms. That's going to save nothing.
But it's, I think, probably the gym is the, depends probably with that thing, yeah. I think, yeah, probably the gym is the, depends probably with that thing, yeah.
I know that, well, I got the sense that it wasn't really taken up as an actual option, but what about those, whatever you call it, Melanie, those hearing assists?
They're called talkers.
Yeah, talkers. I mean, if we had a dozen or two dozen of those available for people.
Like a crazy share, I mean, just, it's a little headset with a little microphone that identifies everything that's going around, maybe no, you could, they're not, but they're literally called talkers.
I just, I'm reluctant to actually do nothing in the face of complaints, you know? That, that's my concern. And I don't think we're in a position to judge whether people's complaints are valid or invalid, you know? I do hear us all saying the acoustics are bad. You know, I myself am hearing impaired by like 16 and 16% in one ear and 23% in the other ear, and I have struggle to hear in there. So.
Yeah, so I'm making sure, yes. That's talking, right? I wonder if she's going to be like, what are those? Sure. Now you only have 700 and so.
I bet, we had $832, right?
Eight fifty-two.
Eight fifty-two. There we go.
Yeah, I mean, we pulled over all the money. That's why we got to eight fifty-two.
Oh, so we don't have any money.
So you can't be at 700 and so.
Oh.
Yes, I had to take all the money away because I wanted to see that we were going to be okay.
Yep. So I don't think we need to make a motion on this one, either the purchase of the talkers or the location of the meeting, but I do want to hear from everybody on both issues. What do you think, Carrie?
As much as I hate to say it, I think we do need to be in the gym, I'm concerned, for the amount of people that are talking.
Yeah.
And I hope we're proven wrong and that there isn't a ton of people that are there to, you know, but I would rather see more people there and get their jeans and talk it through than have people complain the day after that, you know, we pulled something. So, and then I think the talkers are a great idea, whatever we can provide to these people to help them be able to hear and ask complaints there too. So all of the above.
Jean, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of with Andy's sentiment, like what he said last week about that, we're adults prepared, but we know that people don't always have that option, so.
And you can get new people that have never been in the gym and didn't realize there was going to be an issue. You would have something. At what cost relative?
I would say five percent.
Doesn't that like happen?
Melanie, it sounds like you're on board, but just checking in.
Yeah. I wish we could do it in the auditorium, but I think it's hard to plan.
Okay, so, all right, in the gym, we'll get some talkers.
And also, it'd probably easier, more easily facilitate the private vote that we know is going to come out.
That's true. You try to line up the auditorium, you know, that would be. Okay.
This brings us to number six, our second and final round of public comments. We still do not have any members of the public here in person. I'll just extend this a little bit in case. Yeah, okay. All right, we have need to go into non-public session.
Yeah. Out there for anybody who may be watching, but I pulled in at 20 after 6, the apartment was full. The school is the only building that's open in this town for the length and duration of time that, that it is. So it's a central part of our community and, you know, this is one of the reasons that I wholeheartedly, I look at the numbers and it makes me sick, but I will largely support it because of what all the schools, not just being, but all the schools mean beyond just school. We could probably save a ton of money if we just shut the school down and the kids left, you know? But that's not the reality of it and that's not the purpose it serves.
And just to elaborate, one of the reasons, I don't know everything else that's going on in this building tonight, but one of the reasons is the variety show that the Pembroke Hill School is putting on.
Yeah.
And I was there for the beginning of it and the 500-capacity auditorium was almost full.
Yeah, that's what it means to the community.
Thanks, Jean. Little dry after that, but we do have need to go into non-public for two reasons. Well, hold on, let me just say the reasons. One is lowercase a, which is the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee for the investigation of any charges against him or her. And the other reason is lowercase c, which is matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board.
Oh, actually, we.
Sorry, let's do the roll call vote on the record. Carrie? And a yes? Jean?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Now we're ready to stop. Thank you.